Okay, I call this meeting to order. Um, any public input? Approval of the minutes for November 6th school board meeting. Any further discussion, corrections, or additions?
I didn't see anything either.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the November 9th budget proposal meeting. Who is Mr. Ralph?
Budget meeting minutes?
Yep.
So what?
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any errors or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to accept the November 16th budget meeting.
So who?
Do you hear a second? Any errors or omissions? Yep. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Manifest are rolling around, I think they're up by grade.
Yes.
Um, no unfinished business? No new business? Um, special ed report there Kelly?
Oh, okay. Well, we were told that we weren't.
Yeah, I was told they would make oral presentations.
I mean, there's not a whole lot of.
I saw your report.
Yeah.
Any questions for Kelly?
Yeah, there you go. Any questions of Kelly's two line report?
Okay. Um, any questions for Jennifer? On her report?
I did add some numbers that I'd forgotten, but we can share those. No time. Number of student council members, we've got 18 middle schoolers and 18 high schoolers. I left that blank.
Okay.
And for National Honor Society, um, there are 14 juniors and nine seniors. So that was not in there. I noticed when I got it sent to you.
Okay.
Well, I just want to mention, before it was fairly brief, that I just want to mention we had two, I thought, positive visits to community colleges. One to Lake Region. We had a nice tour. Especially the auto. Courses they offered, programs they offer there. Brand new building, very impressive. And of course, this last Friday, we did take a tour of their open, annual open house on White Mountain Community College. Up in the building.
Well, if you're highlighting that. Jen's got more.
Oh, now we're going.
Fabulous Veterans Day celebration and the play.
Oh, yes, yes.
Fabulous. Um, and our socktober, sock drive, um, resulted in over like 780 pairs of socks. And we delivered those to the different homeless shelters that came and received them, but we were able to go to Lancaster, um, and get a tour of the facility. So we took the kids on a field trip. It was good in PR. Lori Wood did a great job with that, been a great class project.
Good article of career too. It was really. It's nice to see those.
Mr. Pryor?
Do you have any questions?
His eye, his eye is on.
You saw the updated pictures for the Washington Street?
Yeah.
You know, that came out really nice.
And that hammer down.
Okay, good.
Hopefully, they were labeled the right way.
I don't have them labeled. Oh, yeah, before I did it, because I'm thinking, okay, was one on the left side and the right side?
You mentioned that Hammer Down did some extra work there. I have no charge, so I want to thank all of that.
Yes.
I want to ask you a question about, um, um, training. With software.
So, we were given the proposal last year from them to purchase a piece of hardware which would allow them to remote into our system. I believe the quote we got last year was like $3,400 roughly. And that was presented as a group and, and we elected not to do that. However, when they came last week to, um, handle an issue with a sensor and a controller board, um, we found out that their, their trips are not covered in our yearly service. So, a $2,200 trip up and back, you know, they still would have had to come for one trip, but they would have been able to diagnose that remotely. So it would have been half the cost of that. So you figure if that happens three times a year, which it surpasses that, then we would get our money back in the long run. So, just something that was presented last year and it was declined.
But I think we haven't had train for a while and then we got them back. Is that right? To keep track of our stuff?
Yeah.
To me, it's worth the expense to have a contract and let them do the remote from wherever they live.
Yeah, because it took that, that was the other thing. It's like the, the music room at the high school didn't have heat for three days because it took them that long to be able to come up here. So we had to, you know, finagle some things around, but we found out it was just a bad controller board. But still, they had to come up, diagnose it, then they still have to come back and replace it. But in the meantime, they turned it on high heat. And that's the only, it's either high heat or no heat for that area.
But they could, they probably could have diagnosed it from where.
Correct, without having to come.
Without having to come up.
And they couldn't have done it same day.
And said to you, we need this, and we'll order it and come up.
Correct.
So, so three of those issues would pay for, pay for itself.
Yeah.
And that's a one-time fee to buy that piece of hardware. It's not like a yearly thing. It's just a piece of hardware that sits in the custodial office where the computer is that they're able to sign into. So it's a one-time cost.
Do we have it in the budget for next year?
It was not, but we can probably make arrangements or we can make arrangements out of, you know, this year's or something.
What was the figure deal?
I think it's like $3,400 for the device.
Well, that sounds like a no brainer to me.
Okay. I can get back to you. I mean, I'll, I'll look at what we have in right now and then for next year as well and see what we can do.
Okay.
But it would be a long, and my, my guess would be a long-term cost savings.
Yeah.
Probably short-term actually. Probably get the money back before the end of the year. At this rate.
Okay, and Crystal?
Um, do you have any questions for Crystal?
Did we do her already?
No, but see, they aren't prepared to do a report.
Well, I know, but anybody got any questions for Crystal?
Yeah, the only, there wasn't much on my report either. Just, I want to make a mention that Chris Kapler won the Who Inspires Us Award. I had nominated her and she won. So she and, and Nurse Penny went down there. She didn't know why she was going, so it was a surprise. But Deb Hampson was able to read her that. So I attached, um, the photo and her, my nomination for her. But I just wanted to make that statement out loud that she did win that. She's very deserving of it. And then tomorrow, if you're bored at 1:45, is the Lakeway fundraiser where I get color blasted, so.
Oh, 1:45?
1:45 out back. You'll be able to find me, so I'll be the one that's like rainbow bright.
Hopefully, we can get a camera down there. Yeah, we probably can make that happen.
It'll be all over Facebook before I get out of the chair. It's pretty well covered. But this year, we're actually pulling two surprise teacher names from a hat right before, so they think they're so funny laughing at me, but two of them will be joining me tomorrow.
One on each side.
That's right. It'll belong to the color.
Crystal, I do have a question.
Yep.
It's a question for you and Dale possibly. Couple weeks ago, there was a leak in the main hallway from the office doing to, to the main corridor. Did they determine what that was from?
Um, Paul Mary Roofing did come in. I did not hear the end result of that, but it is not leaking anymore, so I don't know if it was like a plumbing issue. I can check with Terry. I usually meet with him on Tuesday mornings. So I haven't, I haven't met with him since they've been in.
Just curious, as we discuss the issues at Lakeway.
Roofing is on Terry and mine agenda every, every Tuesday morning that we meet. Just so we can keep an eye on that. And Dale and I have talked too about keeping an eye on the amount of snow that accumulates on the roof this year and trying to stay ahead of that piece as well. Hopefully, it's done and over with, but I'll let.
Well, that was in an area that we weren't sure.
That was a new one. That was a new one.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, committee reports, personnel.
We did have a quick meeting. Well, I mean, we didn't talk about stuff. Budget, budget increases and things like that of income.
All right, anything problem facilities?
We haven't met since our last meeting we reported the last time on that, so nothing other than my question about that recent leak in Lakeway, so.
Okay, so where was that leak at Lakeway?
It was in the main hallway from a few rooms by the office and go down towards the main corridor, then, then splits up into all the major, um, teaching areas, the gym and the cafeteria. It was right in that main hallway.
Oh, so there's actually another one then. So that was the first one, then the one after that is right outside Peggy Bronley's.
Oh, okay, so even closer.
So there's one where you're referencing at the end of the T there, and then there was one farther back up the hallway. So they were in twice, so.
And then there was some, as you turn the corner and head towards the cafeteria, there was, I could see some staining in the ceiling tiles, but I couldn't remember if those were old or.
That's been there.
That's been there. I couldn't, I didn't know if it was from the same leak that kind of raptor on the corridor or what.
Don't look up. Those tiles are in a lot of places looking pretty dingy.
Okay. All right, policies. We have several policies.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have another meeting, um, next. When do I put that? Tuesday? Wednesday with 2:90? I moved it to 9:30 because I'm supposed to have a meeting with superintendent at 8:30.
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, first policy is, is GBEC and slash ADV. You'll notice and read the new updates from the National School Boards Association on that one. And then number four, we had to add D, which was consuming, processing, or distributing alcohol or illegal drugs at official school functions, not on school property. And we had to add number eight, which says posted each school and in the district school bus drug-free school zone signs with a map of the drug-free zone around each school. And the signs will be provided by the Department of Education. So if they're not, I guess Dr. Miles was checking for that. So, um, that is a revision of that policy. Entertain a motion, um, for a first read and adoption, because we've had it in effect for a while. Motion to adopt policy GBEC for first reading and adoption. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The other thing is this, these two policies reverse. One is in section A, ADV, it's the same name. The other one is in section G, and it goes GBEC then slash ADV. So, you're looking for it. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept it as an ADV policy as well.
I'd like to make a motion to also accept the drug-free workplace, drug-free schools policy, ADD, for first reading and adoption.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one we have is, um, policy DCD or DGD?
DGD.
DGD, okay. This is a new policy for the district. It's a, uh, school district credit cards. We kind of went over this with a fine-tooth comb. And the statement of purpose is that the superintendent or designated is authorized to procure a credit card or cards in the school district's name. And it will be under the sole supervision of the superintendent or the business administrator. And the policy says that the district credit card shall be used only for the purchase of school district pre-approved official district expenses. What we have is people that go down, sometimes we need a, something at Home Depot, sometimes we need something at Lowe's, and people have gone down there to purchase that, but it's going to be a little bit stricter. And then the board will be looking at reviewing the credit card payments as they come through our expense accounts. So I would entertain a motion to accept that one as a first reading.
I'd like to make a motion to accept policy DGDs for district credit cards for our first reading.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That will come back at our next, so we don't have a meeting, I think, in early December. The next policy we have is, I'm going to open up. KGF. It's KGF. It's recognition of distinguished or deceased individuals or groups. This is a new policy. Both Kim and I have researched different other school districts about their, um, recognition. And so we've sort of adopted it for ourselves. And it says, "Any individual or group may submit a written request to establish a memorial or otherwise honor or to recognize an individual, group, or of individuals." That's one statement. There's more to it. And then, um, secondly, in honor of the, for the board to consider a request, the people or persons that are making the request, um, has to submit a letter of application or information to the board of why the person, the person should be recognized. We do list a few different types of awards. Could be memorials, could be scholarships, could be, um, naming of a district sponsored event or activity. We did have one for a track meet a long time ago, and we have one every year for one of our former employees to note that. So, if the board has read all of this, I will just mention that at the very end of this policy, we did put down what schools or wings of schools were named by whom and when. We also have an elevator down at Lakeway in memory of a former student. Mark Pivelli run is the former educator that we had. There's somebody by the name of Angela Delone Bench. I, it was donated in 1998, but I don't know, she got killed in an accident.
Car accident.
Huh?
Car accident.
Yeah. And then there's about three benches in the Daisy Bronson Way, you know, named after former retirees.
Do you still have a question? It sounds like we weren't up to speed on what has been donated or what has been given. So now are you saying that, like, if they want to do a bench or if they want to do a designated, anything, they're supposed to come to the board for approval first?
I would think so, yeah.
Is that the policy?
I know some of the kids have donated things in memory of student council people that donate things in memory, but sometimes the board doesn't know all about this, so I think it would be nice.
No, I, I have no, I enjoyed seeing the benches and whatnot when I went through the school, but I did not know they were even there.
Yeah.
So that'd be nice to know, so.
So, do I hear a motion to accept this for a first read?
No. Oh, you want to.
It's okay.
No, you do it. You have the policy, girl.
I'd like to make a motion to accept policy KGF, recognition of distinguished or deceased individuals or groups, for a first reading.
So, second.
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 Any further discussion?
Yeah.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is, um, policy BEDC. It's about quorum of the board. And in today's world, as we all know, um, we can attend by electronic measures. So, this, a simple majority of the board show constituted quorum, so that means three out of five. And then if you participate electronically, which I did a few months ago, quite interesting. This tells you the procedure of that. And then whenever you do that, you have to have a roll call vote from all people present. You, the people in the audience have to be able to hear whatever this person's talking about on the phone or Skype or whatever. So I thought that we should have this policy up to date and current. So do I hear a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept policy BEDC, quorum for first reading and adoption.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one is, um, IHAMA. It's education related to alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. And I believe this is a new one. Where am I? So, I think it came out as teaching about, but we thought it should be education related to alcohol and drugs, um, which just says that the statement of purpose, district personnel should provide students, parents, and legal guidance with information and resources relating to existing drug and alcohol counseling and treatment for students. And the superintendent is, is responsible for a lot of things for that to go ahead. So being as this is a new policy, I would entertain a motion for a first reading.
To enter into motion to accept policy IHAMA, education related to alcohol, drugs, and tobacco for a first reading.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is policy JLCK. It's special physical health needs of students. The Littleton School District will make every effort to reasonably meet the special physical health needs of all students consistent with state and federal law. And that the school board recommends that all pupils participate in developmentally appropriate daily physical activity and exercise or, or physical education in a way to minimize health risks created by chronic inactivity, childhood obesity, and other related health I think we already have this as a policy. So revised first reading and adoption. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept policy JLCK, special physical health needs of students for a first reading and adoption.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, the next one, we do have that, uh, policy. It's EHB. It's data records and retention. So, the purpose of the policy is the superintendent should develop procedures for a records retention system that is in compliance with RSA 18829 and Department of Education regulations. It goes into a lot of special education records, um, litigation hold, um, which means unreceived notice from legal counsel representing the district and that a litigation hold is required regarding the routine destruction of governmental records and a few dozen other things. It just talks about that. Right to know request is in there. So, we had this policy before. We've added in current updates as provided by the School Boards Association. So I would entertain a motion for a first read and adoption for this one. Okay.
Motion to accept policy EHB, data records and retention for a first read.
Second. Second? First read, are you going to bring that back? We're going to adopt this one?
We did first read and adoption.
Uh, first read and adoption, sorry, this one's first read.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, to go along with that, there's a regulation. EHBR, says local records retention schedule. This is a first reading. It goes into all the details of all the local records, the right to know requests, how long the retention periods are, it's, and gives a list of records and how long they should be kept, like annual audits or permanent, so on and so forth. And then, I think at the bottom, this is about eight pages. Special education records, Littleton School District shall not destroy students' special education records prior to the student's 25th birthday, except with prior written consent of the parent or where applicable, the adult student pursuant to 34 CFR 300.624B. And those records then have to be maintained until his 60th birthday before they can be destroyed. I'm fine, huh Kelly?
Yeah.
So, I will accept a first reading motion on this one.
Motion to accept EHBR, local records retention schedule for a first reading.
Second?
Yes, I did.
All right. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's it for night. Tonight on those, day two, because we have a few dozen more coming up. And those, by the way, are all regulations now, pretty much probably, except for one. They are categorized as priority, which means that you have to have them. Another priority is recommended, and then a third priority is optional. But doing these policies, they will refer you back and forth to two or three other sections. Anyway, with that being said, we now have the superintendent's report.
Okay, and I know Jennifer mentioned this a little bit, but again, want to thank everybody who participated in the veterans ceremony. National Honor Society for their organization, the choir, uh, and band, both of which provided the music. And I think, again, it was an excellent ceremony and again, really appreciate the veterans, their families who were able to attend. It's nice, uh, the Littleton Schools is a, does, does that, that type of event. I don't know that that's commonplace, but it's, I'm really, really pleased that we're able to do that, take, take part of that, and certainly recognize, uh, those individuals. The musical also, a huge success, four sessions. Recognized Ed Steinere, Chrissy Noe, drama mamas and papas who did all the selling of the tickets and the concessions and cooking meals for the kids during the week of the play and so on. Mr. De Sette, Mr. Hastings, spent a tremendous amount of time there. Michael Callahan, who's a custodian on duty much of the time, and who has also received recognition from the students. Again, it was a great showcase of talent, many, many kids' talent, whether it's acting, dancing, helping with the set, with actual production. My gratitude and kudos go to all them. We just, we have finished our second school-town budget meeting last week, and I thought it went really well. I thought the principals, the directors did a great job in their presentations, the first meeting, I think that really got things started off on a good foot. Had a chance to see a little bit about where the money goes, the things we're doing, the challenges that we have. But I thank the Budget Committee for their attendance, and for, I think, a good start to the process there, and for bringing the questions that they had. Hopefully, we were able to give the kind of information and have the kind of dialogue that we'll need going forward. I just, Al and I attended an economic, a Littleton Economic Celebration, I brought a few handouts with me. This was a part of a presentation that was given by Brian, Brian Ward. And he has some pretty, pretty interesting information, data, and there's a few actually that they would like to take a look. I will go through that with you, this is free to take and look over. But it tells a lot about the efforts of the, of the economic development here, a little bit of history, the tax base, the growth of the tax base from 1992. Unfortunately, as we all know, the tax base has declined a bit from a peak a few years back, but it's still three times what it was when some of these efforts started to take place. So we were pleased to be a part of that and listen to the different entities and plans. And I guess that is the hope, the hope and dreams of a community. And, you know, more than dreams, when you look at the success of the industrial park and some of the other things, and things that are going on with the riverfront development and so on. I did want to comment briefly on grants, we did get a little more money of RILIS, Real Schools Grant from the state, New Hampshire, a little over $12,000. I'll be working with the administrative team on that, earmark that for programs that we currently are doing. You got the full grant report, I believe, in our last meeting from Paul, we didn't have a chance to talk much about that. But in the near future, I do want to bring back, once the dust all settles on last year's grant, there is money carried over from last year's grant. I do want to take a little more in-depth time with you, looking at that, looking at Title I, how much, you know, where are we with Title I, and how the funding of that is supporting that program. We, at this point, are able to fund that program with a little left to spare, as well as any other updates. We didn't spend all the grant money from a year ago, there is carryover. But I think it's important that you get a sense of that beyond what you saw of just the report the other day.
What type of programs does the RILIS grant?
It is a grant that is based mostly on students' economic status. Yeah, it was a grant that was originally intended to target lower-income communities. Some of the areas that they recommended that the fact money go toward was drug and alcohol prevention, mental health, but we have quite a bit of discretion with that, actually. And that was one that really didn't know if it was going to be around anymore, and it popped up sort of out of blue here a couple of weeks ago, which was a good, a good pleasant surprise for a change when it comes to budget and money. You know, and I'll talk more about this, like I said, I do think at a future meeting, we do need to take a real good look at the grants, the future of the grants, the status of the grants with the Fed, and so on, because there's going to be some changes there. Have been in contact with our architect, or at least one architect, firm, Warren Street, regarding our request to have a study done at Lakeway, again, to build on the earlier studies that were done. Basically, what I asked him to do was to, if we were to occupy the building only for five more years, what are the most immediate things that would need to happen to get us, to get us there? You know, five years sounds like a long time, but frankly, by the time you do, everything needs to be done and successfully pass a bond issue, it would be, at best case, even if we started almost tomorrow, almost five years before we get there. So I did ask for a little bit of a, of a plan for what the most immediate needs, the things that just get us by, until a new school would be built in case, in the case that we're able to build that in five years. If that's not the case, what would we need to be looking at in a span of five to 10 years? So if it doesn't happen in five years, if it's longer than that, then what are the things that are coming? The things that, you know, might be, we might be able to put off for five years, but can't put off for more than five years. So we'll get a good sense of that. And then finally, I asked him for the, for the kinds of things, the long-term things, in the event that the community would decide that we need to occupy the current building and fix what is there, longer term, what would that look like? And again, looking at those different scenarios of what each will cost, and what would be, again, I think that's, will be good information for the community, for the board, going forward, looking at the choices that we have.
When they do that, do they mention the location of the building? No matter what the building's like, geographically located, it's not good? I mean, it's just...
That's another, that's another...
I didn't know if they...
No, I don't anticipate that, I think they'll, they'll look at, you know, if you're going to stay in the building for the foreseeable future, or beyond 10 years, then that's a whole different, a whole different set of things that you need to do versus if we think, no, we might not be there that long. I think we need to look at it in those various steps, so that people get a sense of what it will take.
Having been around for a while, that's certainly a very important issue, requesting a new Lakeway.
Yep.
And one of them was the location and the availability of doing anything where we are. That's the main route, there's no other routes. And no matter what we do, or what we get for bad days, you know, it's just not, not working. So I want somebody to at least take a look at that.
So if we have that kind of feasibility study, for example, staying there for another five or 10 years, that'll make it about 80 years old, you know, how much would it cost to build brand-new with all this extra stuff? Need to know that as well.
Yep. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you can, you can sort of look at the last, the last work that was done, apply some inflation, probably get an idea, but let's face it, there are things that are different now. There are certain things that you did back then you don't do now, certain things that need to be done now that weren't done back then, a lot more money...
But what does, I'm sorry.
A lot of new structure, a lot more money being put in for security, for instance.
That's right.
Than it was even, even 10 years ago, and I realize 10 years ago was well past Columbine, but, you know, even 10 years ago, that issue alone has changed significantly.
But what doesn't change is the son of postage stamp. That doesn't change.
Doesn't change a major, I mean, it's a busy street.
Right.
You know, with the absence, can't, can't get off this topic, the stoplight. Thank you for taking away the one little buffer we had there. So, yeah, there's, it doesn't change that, it doesn't change the fact that, that there's no room to do anything in terms of expansion, in terms of fields, and playgrounds, and parking, and so on.
Well, things are a lot different today than they were in 1950.
Yep. So, there you have it. I will, I will be working on the infrastructure grants as well. I'll keep those fairly small, unfortunately. You know, I think that the state grant that's out there is a 60-40 split. You know, I'm just, I'm fairly disappointed that they didn't, you know, take the time to at least factor in the economic wealth or people factors in some of that as well, that 60-40 split. 40% mass in some budgets is much easier than others. So we won't be able to be terribly aggressive there, but some of the things that were perhaps in the budget as well, we'll get some help with at least.
This is stuff.
That's all I have?
What about?
Oh, there is, yeah, there are some documents I put there for your information.
Yeah, I see.
I think that dealt mainly with the work that was done with the tank and the lines, and showing it's a test we, let's see.
All right, anything else to come before this meeting? If not, I entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A, 03 of the right to know law for number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee, number three, matters adversely affect the education of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us, superintendent.
Negotiations also?
No, we don't have to do that, Tom.
Oh, okay.
We have no, you can do that then.
So taking with us, superintendent?
Yep. And how do you want, did you want to do this initially with, just with Jennifer, on the personnel piece?
Yeah, because we have some nominations.
So taking with us the...
I think Crystal can go home and the rest can hang out.
Okay.
Just high school principal?
I, I think for the initial piece, unless you want, unless you want everybody else there, we want to talk about the nominations.
Oh, okay.
That won't take, hopefully, too long, and we can do the other.
Everybody's set? We have a second roll call?
Just need a second.
Second. Dan, roll call.
Greg Cook?
Kim Woodson.
And I'll announce them?
Yeah.